Twenty fifth in attendance is Commissioner Ephesia Phi, she's on Zoom with us. Commissioner Jason Snyder and Commissioner Jerry Willey, myself. I'm sitting in for Chair Harrington, who's excused, Vice Chair Pam Treese. So today we are going to hit the ground running. We're getting a later start, so I'm sure everyone is well rested. So here we go. I'd like to welcome Adrian Chilay to talk with us along with Ann Ober about the CPACE program update.
Thank you very much for that warm welcome. Ann Ober, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators here at the county. So as the board members know, over the last few months, we have been sitting on an open vacancy, knowing that we were facing significant budget cuts. That position is our active manager position. We ended up reconstituting our ARPA team and the amazing Adrian to help us get through some of these transitions as that program closes off. CPACE has been a part of that outstanding program. And we are also here to talk about the successes we've had with the program and also talk to you about whether or not we're comfortable closing the program early, simply because we will not have sufficient staffing. Should we not reconstitute that position to continue managing the role? So I am here today, as much as you've introduced the two of us. Our longest standing employee of this program is actually Courtney.
Sorry, I missed you, Courtney.
Courtney will be jumping in with some of the history just because she's seen more of the applications and done more of that past practice than we have. But with that, we're going to turn it over to Adrian and then we'll be here to answer questions. Thank you. For the record, Adrian Chilay, Economic Development Manager, Washington County. And today, we, as Ann mentioned, are just going to provide you with a brief update of the CPACE program to date and share some of our recommendations based on our assessment. To discuss following this presentation, we would love to hear from your board about what questions you might have in regards to sunsetting the CPACE program, what additional information you might need and what questions you have about the next steps that we'll be proposing. As a reminder, CPACE is the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which was authorized by the Oregon State Legislature. It's a real estate finance program to incentivize clean energy, energy efficiency, water efficiency and seismic systems. And as you know, the program goal of CPACE is to promote resilience and sustainability of the built environment. This acts like an assessment where priority property lien is recorded and the loan is paid back to a lender over time. Eligibility includes all types of commercial properties, including office, industrial, agriculture, hotels, multifamily housing, affordable housing and mixed use developments. This is some background on the program development. As you can see, in July of, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Well, as Ann mentioned, we administer the program in partnership with County Council and the Washington County Board of Commissioners passed the ordinance eight nine one on October 18th, 2022, which enabled the creation of the CPACE program. A second ordinance was passed on November 8th, 2024. And here is that overview. The program is set to run as a demonstration project through 2025, at which time the board may decide to extend or sunset the program. The purpose of the program amending ordinance was to require an assessment of the program following two years of program authorization and implementation and to sunset the program unless sooner continued on December 30th, 2025. Here's some more details about that amendment. We will be providing the assessment specific to the amendment now. So the program was created really to promote resiliency and sustainability, generate more development and support for local government partners. And we want to hold that in mind, considering some of the projects that have come through. Since 2022, we have received several inquiries and we've only completed two projects. Both of those projects are industrial or commercial properties. There was a hotel property. It was a 90-room hotel located in the Cedar Mill area of unincorporated Washington County. And the CPACE loan was used as a retroactive recapitalization of the hotel as it had been substantially completed previously. And this is allowed under the county CPACE program guidelines and consistent with state law. The CPACE loan, which is administered by a capital provider, amounted to 9.9 million. And to execute this project, we worked closely with the capital provider and there was no engagement with the property owner. The second CPACE project we closed last week, Courtney and I, and is a self-stored unit located in Hillsborough near the airport. The staff worked with two national capital providers and property owners in the process. Improvements included energy efficiency, seismic rehabilitation and an upgraded HVAC system. The CPACE loan, also administered by the private capital provider, totaled 8.6 million. So the question, you know, we're posing in our assessment is if the policy connections to resiliency and economic development are being met through these project types. And with that, based on our assessment, our recommendation, as Ann mentioned, is to sunset the CPACE program prior to the ordinance sunset date, primarily due to lack of capacity, but also we are constantly seeking an outcomes and data-driven approach. And to that end, based on the lack of meaningful policy connections, we recommend sunsetting the program. There is still a pathway forward, as you saw in the staff memo, for local cities to engage in the CPACE program. And Coal PAC is also researching ways to initiate CPACE programs. So that's something Courtney and I are providing technical assistance on. The next steps, if your board agrees to proceed with sunsetting the program, staff recommends we would introduce the ordinance and do a first reading on March 18th and then on April 1st, a second reading and public hearing. If adopted, that becomes effective no sooner than 14 days later. And with that, we would welcome questions and discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, so going back to slide eight. You say in there, in almost two years, the program has been active. The county has received several inquiries and completed two projects. Do we have anything on the horizon?
We do not at this time.
So the other inquiries went away?
Exactly.
Like they weren't a good fit?
You want to speak to that?
We've had several inquiries where they're just, oh, sorry. So we've had a number of inquiries just about how our program works. We're just answering basic questions, I believe. I think we've had maybe only one more actual application where, you know, we reviewed and staff reviewed the application for compliance and said, yes, this meets the compliance. I believe we got a deposit and the deal never closed. It got hung up at the lien holder consent. Part of the process requires senior lien holders to say they consent to this loan because it jumps in priority as part of the statutory process. And they were, the owner was never able to get that consent, so it never closed.
It's a simple subordination of the loan?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just moved.
We get super priority, they get super priority, this loan gets super priority. So to answer your question, no, there's none in the pipeline. My experience in the last couple of years of running this is we just kind of get pinged, you know, and then some come back, some just never, we hear from again.
And often it has to do with the capital providers themselves and their relationship with the property owners. For example, this last deal we closed was initiated in the fall by a different capital provider and then closed the deal with a different capital provider than the original one. So there's a lot of shuffle going on because of the complexity of bringing these loans together as well as, yeah, the legalities of it. I think, as Courtney mentioned, the lien being super priority can bring up issues.
What's been the conversation with Coal PAC?
Coal PAC is just really interested in talking to us about our experience with CPACE. They're more interested in, I think, the mechanics of how we created it, what research did we do. One of the recommendations that we've provided is to consider ways that the parameters around the benefits that could be provided through CPACE. So is there some more detailed criteria around meaningful, you know, equitable economic development or sustainability values placed on that? And they're really excited about ways that they could explore that with their leadership.
So our CPACE program was for Washington County?
Yes.
All of Washington County, okay. So then Coal PAC, if they did this, would be on their district lines, which includes Forest Grove. Okay.
And they can do that because they're an economic development district.
Yes, yeah, well, it's interesting, since I sit on Coal PAC's board. I think I heard their interest, but I didn't hear anything more of that, so I didn't know where that was going.
I think it's just that the staff is just in the preliminary assessment phase. Courtney and I were supposed to meet with them last week. There was a sick man.
Commissioner Phi, do you have a question?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, Commissioner Treese. Adrian and Courtney, thank you for your presentation. I followed you, this is a pretty straightforward presentation. I appreciate the succinctness and, and to use your word, the leanness in your presentation, super lean. I did have a question while, in just some of the response you were giving to the other commissioners in the building. And that was something that caught my attention around the provider. I think you said the capital provider as being the initiator. Why not the building owners? There's never been a building owner interest expressed? Or is just the two have been just the capital provider?
So not to, why we haven't heard from property owners, Commissioner Phi? I don't think, I would only be speculating, but in the two projects that we have received, the owners have been very sophisticated corporate owners who are very versed in all sorts of complex financing. So I believe they have pre-existing relationships with finance institutions. So these institutions are working on their behalf. I don't want to, I had several conversations with Adrian's predecessor about what kind of interests we were seeing in the program and what we had hoped to see in interest in the program when we started it. And I can speak for him, and I'll let Adrian speak for herself, that he was really hoping to see, you know, small property owners doing more actual resilience type improvements, either environmental or seismic, as the program allows. But we just weren't seeing that. And he expressed if he had time and capacity to do that outreach, we probably would get that interest, but there just wasn't the resources to do that type of outreach at the time.
Thank you, I think you answered my question. I was just going to ask the outreach arm to this, but I think you did that without even me asking. So it's a great, oh, go ahead, Adrian.
I was just gonna, just gonna add on that I don't think we're alone in the challenges with outreach. I know Multnomah County has also struggled and other projects, the scale, you know, much outside of the control of the county. These challenges include things like minimum project scale as required by capital providers. So that's typically in the millions. So smaller property owners aren't able to access that type of resource.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't have any other questions other than to say it's unfortunate that we're losing this, but I do hear you loud and clear and with you on this journey that we're navigating when it comes to what is the priority here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have anything? I had a couple more comments of that.
I mean, I'll just comment that clearly the demand is not, honestly, the large organizations that have institutional lenders working on their behalf are probably not really who we were targeting, but that's who's sophisticated enough to use this program. And it's not, you know, we're not seeing the results probably hoped. Time to wind it down. Sounds like we're not leaving a lot on the table, I'll leave it at that.
And I'd like to make a couple of comments. I was involved early on at the inception of the CPACE program because the developer in the Tiger Triangle really pushed us to look at this opportunity. And I think that that's what started us down the path. I don't know if you remember this, but, and then they ended up not using the CPACE program themselves. So it is, I'd say my experience in watching these, it's a niche and all the stars have to be aligned to be able to utilize the program and for us to see the benefits on the environmental side, if you will, as well. So given the narrow nature of the application of this and the capacity issues, I will be supporting the sunsetting. But I also think that we have the skill set now, at least the awareness, that if we find ourselves down the road in a situation where the demand is higher and perhaps the parameters are a little wider, we may want to revisit it. So that's, that's what I would say. But I remember those early days, it was not easy. And, you know, I think we had high hopes that didn't get realized.
Yeah, there was a couple of opportunities, I think, that didn't materialize on that. I guess we get paid to do this, so I'm assuming we didn't lose any money. It's just about your ability to facilitate this with your time constraints.
Correct.
Okay. But we do have, as you say, we have two possibilities. Two existing CPACE projects will continue until the loan is satisfied. Is there going to be any time on, for us in that, during this timeframe?
Commissioner Willie, only if the owner defaults and we have to enforce the lien on the behalf of the capital provider.
So these are the projects that we've already basically wrapped up and there's nothing new in the queue.
Correct, correct.
So.
So our role has ended essentially with the closure of the deal. Both of the projects have paid their fees, which is $15,000 each. And, go ahead.
And just to follow up on that, what we may be involved in the future on these two that are closed, the benefit assessment agreement that we do sign does require a bunch of process before the enforcement of the lien. So, you know, it's not like just one missed payment and we're activated. There's a lot of process that has to occur.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, why would we go to the work of creating an ordinance and going through all of that when we just do nothing and it dies December 31st?
I guess I would respond, that is certainly an option. What we have seen is that when these projects, the two that we've seen, they are, again, very sophisticated lenders and owners and they do take, they do demand a lot of our time. They are on a schedule that is, you know, daily interest rates and it just, it is a lot of time for economic development and our office to get them set up. Now, we do get reimbursed, but just in the context of where we are with staffing and other county work, the return feels low. But I would say that we certainly could let it just run out until December.
Involunt and creating an ordinance and doing all of that stuff, whereas you just let it go. But trying to close the door so that we don't have any more interest and then possible projects and things like that. I mean, if we're truly trying to just stop that.
Couldn't we just say we're not accepting applications?
Not based on how it was worded in the ordinance. We do, before Matt left, he actually worked on getting us most of this documentation. So it is actually a pretty significant amount of time for us to get the ordinance amendment before the board. It doesn't mean we have to do it, it's just a statement of it is a relatively low lift in comparison.
Did you say it's a significant amount of time to create the ordinance?
No, it is minor because Matt was, Matt was actually here when we started looking at this possibility, knowing that his position was possibly not going to be refilled.
Okay.
So do we have thumbs up on this?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the work to see if we could make this go and if the need was there. And like I said, I think we certainly understand the program and we know what it's like if we find ourselves in a different position into this.
And we're committed to sharing the findings from this program with the community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next, our next presentation is the 2025 State Legislative Update. Ms. Doyle.
Hopefully the rest of my team is being promoted. Due to the ever-demanding natural of the legislature, I am trying to figure out who actually will be able to make it. So just waiting to see the loans available and Tracy. And Clean Water Services. They're in the meeting room, waiting room, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll get us started because Tracy's popped up and I'm assuming Pablo is shortly behind. So, good afternoon, Board. I am Erin Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager. I'll talk slower to delay for everyone else. We are here to provide your second legislative update and this time joined with Clean Water Services and we'll make sure that our slideshow is properly branded to reflect that next time. But I'm joined with the team that is available. And we're just going to go over some legislative updates on some key policy issues. It's a combination of our legislative priorities and those big ticket items that we've been providing you information on to allow for your guidance direction and ensure that we have given you the information that you might need. And then remind you of how the rest of the session and the next few dates that we have are available. So the question we're always asking you is what further information needs that you have? Or are there any directions that you have based on the information that our team is presenting today? And I'm going to take this next slide. So we told you about where we knew the budget conversation was last time and all we know now is we are waiting for what the federal choices are going to be, which will then will determine the potential impacts to the state's budget. I will provide this update just to state that a little bit. I was talking with Vance Boyk, Pablo and I were talking with them yesterday and we probably won't know much until March 14th about what's going to happen with the federal budget for the fiscal year '25, which started on October 1st of 2024. And they are already probably going to be switching over to fiscal year '26 and doing reconciliation in the next couple of weeks or trying to do reconciliation in the next couple of weeks, which will then determine particularly the Medicaid impact to the state of Oregon. And that's where the state's budget is going to feel some more significant impacts that will create different choices for their general fund. And with that, I believe I am turning it over to Pablo.
Sharon, Pablo Nieves-Falenzuela, Government Relations Manager, for the record. I also just want to add one thing to the conversation about the state budget, which is that tomorrow there will be a revenue forecast update. So we're hoping to get some more information about that, hoping for some good news coming out of that. But shifting over to the courthouse replacement planning project. So as a quick reminder, this is the bill. It allocates $1.25 million in matching state funds for that project. It's being championed by Representative Sosa and a group of bipartisan Washington County legislators. We're adding additional sponsors from the caucus. Representative Walters and McLean agreed to sign on in the last couple of days. We're also working to get it scheduled for a public hearing in the House Judiciary Committee as soon as possible. Next slide, please. Great, and so the bill that focuses on opioid treatment in our Community Corrections Center, HB 3009, we had a really good hearing on that last, well, it was on the 5th of this month. And I want to commend Lonnie Keller, our Community Corrections Center Manager, for delivering really compelling testimony alongside Representative Neuron and several treatment providers. The testimony was unanimously in support of the bill. Legislators spoke in support of it. And we have a couple of committee members who have signed on as well. So we're looking to get that scheduled for a work session as soon as possible. But that kind of segues into my next slide, which, so that piece of the bill or that policy provision, what's included in HB 3009 is also included in SB 236. And so we are working with the committee members. Right now, the co-chairs are unsure of whether they want to include that as a package or just as a standalone bill, but either way, we think that has a very high chance of success. I also want to update you all on a new bill, HB 3576, which was developed by, sorry, Clackamas County. They worked with Representative April Dobson to introduce that bill. And it would also direct the CJC to develop a new funding formula for deflection, just like the language we're working on for 263. The key difference is that it identifies several variables that would need to be included in the new formula. So some of those variables are new and some mirror what is in the current formula. And we're in the process of evaluating the impact on deflection funding for us. But believe that the committee bill that we worked with the co-chairs on is likely to still be the most viable option this legislative session. But it's good to have this other vehicle in case we need to do this as a standalone. So, so next slide, please. Great, so Assessment and Taxation. Another bill that was not yet introduced before our last presentation was HB 3518, which would raise revenue for county assessment and taxation operations in three ways. One, it would increase the document recording fees to $18. It would also appropriate $5 million in general funds and it would ensure that counties can retain 0.3% of the tax revenue that we collect on behalf of other jurisdictions. This is a revenue committee bill and we expect it will be scheduled for a hearing very soon. I also want to update you all on two veterans' property tax exemption bills that are being considered, HB 3287 and SB 387. Those bills would increase property tax exemptions for veterans with disabilities and allow spouses of veterans who have passed away to receive exemptions. With our Assessment and Taxation Department already really being challenged by unstable state funding, we just want to make sure that we don't significantly expand their workload without receiving additional resources from the state to do that work. So a public hearing was held for HB 3287 in the House Revenue Committee and the Senate Veterans Emergency Management Federal and World Affairs Committee, that's a mouthful. They passed SB 387 and it's now in the Senate Finance and Revenue Committee. So we are really grateful that the advocates for that bill, they seem really interested in making sure counties aren't overly burdened by the implementation of this. There are just some technical concerns about how that would work. And so we're just trying to work through that with the committee members. Next slide, please.
Hold on, there's a question in the room.
Oh, thanks.
So I'm not sure if I understand where this is right now. So could you help me, Pablo, with that?
Yeah, in the legislative process.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's the two, there's two bills. 3287 has just had a hearing in the House Revenue Committee. It has not been voted on by that committee, so. So a work session would need to be scheduled for that to happen. On the Senate side, SB 387, that bill did pass out of a policy committee. It's the Veterans Emergency Management Federal World Affairs Committee. And it got sent, it had a subsequent referral to the Senate Finance and Revenue Committee. So so that bill would have to pass there and then potentially go to Ways and Means after that, depending on how amendments affect the cost of the bill. And if it went to Ways and Means, it would have to pass out of there and then go to both the Senate floor and the House floor before going to the governor. So still relatively early stages, but it is certainly an issue that is gaining a lot of traction understandably right now. So.
The reason I'm, thank you. Yes. And the reason I'm asking the question, I know both Commissioner Willie and myself have been asked by Mayor Beatty to look at this as well. So I just wanted to make sure I understood where we are. And I think what I'm hearing you say is the concern was around the implementation impact for our our tax group is what we were worried about, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. And just to give you an example, you know, one of the things in the bill is it essentially requires counties to do the work of of confirming and identifying the the level of disability that the the veteran who's applying for the tax exemption has using the sort of formula that is used by the Department of Veterans Affairs. And that's just something that our A and T department is not trained on. It's not an analysis that they're really familiar with. So kind of asking them to do that level of work, not only is it really time intensive, but it's just not something they're familiar with. So, you know, that's that's one of the concerns, but there's there's a couple of other things like that. And we just want to make sure that, you know, if there's if there's any additional work put on our department that we have that we have.
No unfunded mandate.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Yeah.
I get that. I I'm just curious if we are looking at Veterans Affairs to do some of that assessment so that that isn't something that we would have to do. But that that's just kind of shifting it. I understand.
3518 pass.
Yes.
Was that? Sorry, I missed the question.
I I think the the comment, it was more of a comment, Pablo, but realistically, it's not a question of should the county be doing the work? But can you make the system work without additional county work if this is a state decided program? And then is there, and we can't compel the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to do anything in state law. So we need to have a simple process that's familiar to A and T.
I I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, I'll move to the next slide then.
Great. So after collaborating with law libraries across the state to determine the true cost of what a no cuts budget would be for county law libraries, we're very close to settling on a final ask. It looks like the number will be around $11.5 million, which is slightly more than $3 million over what is being proposed in the Chief Justice's recommended budget. So OJD will be presenting this budget on Thursday morning and I plan to testify in support of additional funding on top of what's included in the recommended budget. And I want to be clear that OJD has been a really strong partner to us and we don't plan to be adversarial in any sense of the word. We simply want to elevate the importance of full funding for our law libraries and we think this is a really good opportunity to do that. Excellent, please. Thanks. So I'm going to channel Zucker here. He's unable to be here, so I'm going to cover some of the issues that he would typically cover for you all. So SB 916, this is the measure that would allow any employee in a labor dispute to gain access to unemployment benefits. Through feedback from public and private employers, the committee is reducing the scope of the bill to just apply to striking workers. The committee is also pondering limiting the total amount of compensation between unemployment benefits and back pay to no more than 100% of a person's salary. There's other changes the committee is examining as well, but we haven't seen the amendment language. And there's an informational hearing on the bill set for the 27th. So just in a couple of days here. So there's definitely more to come on that. Next slide.
Pablo, just quick, explain to me why a person's striking would go back to work if they're being backfilled to 100% of their compensation before they went on strike? So what's as somebody's got to, somebody legislatively has got to be able to connect those dots. Help me out there because I'm going to go on strike here in about 10 minutes. That's fast.
You for the question, Commissioner. Yeah, that is. I'm not sure if I have the the right answer to that. I think it's you raise a good point about, you know, the incentives that folks have when they're contemplating a strike. And that's something that employers like counties have have elevated in this conversation.
I mean, I had that exact same conversation with a senior member of the legislative, Emily, this last weekend.
I I think also I've I've been involved in conversations with Zucker on this on this Senate bill. And there are, there are lots of pieces of this that aren't outlined here because they're still in the sausage making stages. And so to minimize some of the impact here, it is, it does, it's a head scratcher on the surface. There's no question about it.
I think it's just on the surface, but.
And I will say that 100% that that unemployment and back pay at 100% is a actual walk back from the current terms of the bill, which would have them recover full back pay as well as receiving unemployment while in.
We're supposed to feel better about that. Okay, so I'll be not cynical, any more than I was. But tell Zucker that he did a great job in his recap of that in last week's GR update. I really appreciated it. It was very thorough and a good job.
I I have, I would continue to say.
I would second that. And I would also point out that on this and also the next one, we're going to be talking about Washington County has really taken a leadership role and others are utilizing the the work that has been done here. And I just want to underscore that and express my appreciation there too.
Is, are we making any headway with the message about local government impacts?
I'll answer, looking at Pablo for physical case. We have, to my knowledge, we have not made any dent in removing public employers from this legislation at this point in time. And LOC and AOC are also carrying that in as well. I will also just because Zucker's not here to say it, also in a Washington County spirit, just really give a head nod to the work that County Council's office has put together in creating a lot of that information so that we have and and our HR team. Because there's a lot of people who need to understand a lot of different moving parts about all of this. And so they have really dedicated some time to protecting the county in this in this space. So I just wanted to share that out as well.
Okay, one more quick thing that I read this morning and I remember it was an email or whatever it was that they're recommending that we, of course, push back on this by filling in the blanks. It's going to cost us X amount of dollars, whatever. I'd love to see if we've got those numbers, what it would cost.
Template from.
It was it was an AOC legislative alert. I believe we put words on the record. I will make sure that that information is if it's not in it, we'll we'll follow up with the caucus on that, but make sure that you have those that information as well.
I think it'd be good because I think that's helpful talking points when.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are having the conversations.
Yeah, which we've appreciated that teamwork with the commission on as well. Okay.
So shifting over to the conversation about Behavioral Health Resource Network funding and the funding and the formula reforms. SB 610 is up for a public hearing tomorrow. Clackamas County Commissioner Ben West and Marion County Commissioner Danielle Bethel Danielle Bethel will be speaking on our panel with Commissioner Trese and county HHS staff. We were very disappointed to see the decision from the Oversight and Accountability Council related to our burn application. We think our bill offers a remedy to that solution as well. Sorry, was there a question?
Oh, I was being a little snide, but I said understatement.
It was a quiet mumble.
Just wanted to make sure. No worries. I know there's, you know, we're hearing from partners and there is a lot of concern about the OAC's process and their decision here. And I think it really elevates the importance of the bill that we're putting forward and we look forward to that hearing tomorrow. So yeah, we informed the Washington County Caucus about that situation on Monday and caucus members are already reaching out to us and our team to see how they could be helpful. So we're really hoping that we can kind of shift the momentum on on this. Next slide, please. So a few behavioral health related priorities HB 3129. This one provides $25.7 million to colleges, universities and community mental health programs for behavioral health workforce pipeline development. That public hearing was today and we submitted testimony. Lots of powerful stories from educational institutions, professors, presidents and students. The next one I want to talk about here, 3351. And I guess I'll talk about that and 2554 at the same time. These are the compact bills, ones for social workers, ones for counseling, but both create a faster path to licensure for someone coming from out of state to work here or who want to provide telehealth services to Oregonians. So thus far, both bills seem likely to have a real shot at passage this session, which is really exciting.
Didn't, wasn't there a bill last session that was similar to this and it and it didn't pass? And so what what's the difference?
I'd have to have Zucker check in with you or update you all on what the differences between those bills might be. I'm not sure. But but I I know they are, they are very similar and and I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly why the opposition has shifted away yet, but I think Zucker can follow up on that. I'll let him know.
Thank you.
I will also just say, as I'm slightly delaying for time to see if Carly can jump in. But there was also work during during the interim to discuss and have these conversations with the licensing boards as well. So that might have been part of the process.
And these are all three related to workforce development and retention.
Exactly. And I have a really good team also on my, your staff assistants who have some background information. Each one of these has been split up, so it's now a different, like individualized bills so that it can allow for differences between the different different professions. And before it was just one big bill doing the same thing. So. Thank you, Bryn, for that assist. And unfortunately, I don't think Carly has joined, so now I have to talk on her behalf. Oh, woohoo! I'm jumping. It takes a second. And she's coming live from the Capitol. She just got out of a meeting with one of our senators. So. All right, there's Carly. There we go. Go ahead, Carly, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for letting me join you. Acting Chair Five, Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carly Silva Gabrielson, one of the members of the Government Relations Team. Yes, I am crouched in a hall here in the Capitol. Just a few, a few quick things. I wanted to flag for the transportation package that conversations are progressing quite nicely and we are expecting. I'm sorry, my computer just froze on me. We are expecting a proposal in early March. And one thing that I did want to highlight is that following a recent audit of ODOT that uncovered some financial issues with the agency's cash flow model, Senator Bruce Starr from Dundee was appointed to lead a team that's going to be developing recommendations for accountability that will be folded within to the transportation package accountability proposals for ODOT. So we're expecting that to be presented to the Transportation Committee on March 17. Next slide, please. Computer is going quite slow. Okay, housing. So I wanted to flag something that is within our priority and that I'm really excited that we are seeing developed early on is that a package of bills focused on the preservation of regulated affordable housing has been introduced in the Senate Committee on Housing and Development. Among the package are efforts to expand tenant protections and notice requirements, a bond funding ask of $200 million that will support those who are facing eviction and also a new program that's going to be housed in the Oregon Housing and Community Services that will provide ongoing budgetary requests for this program. So it frankly is exactly what we need for to meet our affordable housing needs as we have units that face expiration and come offline.
Next, that's the, that's the WoodSpring answer to WoodSpring for
types of situations.
Other list of 300 plus, right?
That's exactly right. Thank you, Commissioner Trese. Great.
That 200 million, is that what you said?
It is going to be a bond ask of 200 million, correct? And I also wanted to flag that that package is up for hearing on March 3rd, which alarmingly is already next Monday. And Chair Harrington has offered to provide testimony on behalf of Washington County and the experience that the board navigated with WoodSpring. Great. And then I just wanted to highlight a few things happening in the land use space. There there are many, many bills that would impact county operations. But I just wanted to highlight two to kind of give you a little bit of a snapshot. The first one is Senate Bill 462. This bill would require land use planners for local governments, special districts and state agencies to take a continuing education course every two years on land use from the developers' lens specifically. Frankly, there are many aspects of this bill that led us to oppose it as written. But particularly among them would be the education fee that the county would be expected to pay for these courses and the loss of staff time, which amounted to, which amounts to an unfunded mandate. We did submit written testimony from Stephen Roberts, the Director of Land Use and Transportation. And then I also wanted to highlight Senate Bill 438, which is a good example of of bills that are well intended and yet are not practical and would place undue burden on county staff. But Senate Bill 438 would allow a property owner outside of the urban growth boundary to cite an additional dwelling on the property that could only be occupied by a family member of the property owner. Not only would this bill require county to update our codes, but it would again place undue burden on our staff to verify and somehow regulate that the occupants are family members, none of which is detailed in the bill.
This is outside or inside the UGB? I heard one and read the other.
Outside, I believe there's a typo on the side.
Oh, okay. It says within here.
Thank you for that. That is, that is a typo. Thank you for that, Commissioner, outside of the urban growth boundary.
Is this in addition to any other ADU that was not specified for family members?
I'm going to jump in here for Carly if you would like me to, or otherwise tell me to back off.
Thank you, Erin.
So outside of the urban growth boundary, there's extreme restrictions on what type of accessory dwelling units are allowed and which properties they are allowed on. So this would be a significant increase, particularly on resource lands like designated farmland or designated forest land where really you're allowed maybe one unit. There have been efforts towards expanding ADUs on those properties, but they have a lot of requirements that come with them and are very limited sets of circumstances. So this would go one step further and make it an outright if you can prove that it's for a family member and it may is maintained only for a family member, which is a challenge for our staff to enforce.
Carly, do you know who sponsored this bill? Just curious if it, if it was what county it might be from.
I believe it's Senator Anderson. Let me verify that and I will follow up with the board.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And with that, I will pass it on to my colleague Tracy.
Great. Thank you, Board, for having me. Tracy, Rainy Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services. We've got great progress to report on some of our priority items. So happy to share with you that House Bill 2169, which is the water reuse bill that was introduced by the Association of Clean Water Agencies, but has been something that our staff has worked really closely on and been at that table as we develop the language. That bill did have a public hearing. That bill did have a public hearing on February 10. Had a lot of great support from a broad array of different organizations and groups, ranging from agricultural entities, municipalities, other environmental organizations. So that bill is moving along. There are some questions as to whether there may be some changes around industrial reuse. And so we're waiting to see if there will be some amendments or if the bill will move as is. I will say that we did have Clean Water Services staff Jared Kinnear, our water reuse manager, testify in support of that bill, and he did a fantastic job. This bill is slated to be included in the Water Omnibus Bill. So we will continue our advocacy to make sure that as that bill comes into focus that this is a priority item for inclusion within that broader bill. House Bill 2947 is the bill that was introduced, again, at the request of the Association of Clean Water Agencies, Oregon Aqua, that would provide funding for Oregon State University to do a study of the occurrence of PFAS in the land-applied biosolids. This is a bill that has been introduced in two prior sessions, but has not made it through the Ways and Means process. There was a public hearing held actually right after the reuse bill was heard. This bill was up for a public hearing and received pretty broad support as well. So I think the big challenge in this bill is going to be whether or not it becomes a priority for receiving the funding once it does move into the Ways and Means process. Low-income household water assistance, another item that we've been working on that reflects our utility resilience and effectiveness priority, had a public hearing last week. This is the bill that would provide state funding. They're seeking $11 million to continue the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program, or LIWAP. That program was initially started, was approved by Congress in 2020. And Washington County, through that federal funding, received close to $1 million, which was fully spent down within a matter of about three months. So demonstrating a really significant need for individuals who were struggling to afford their water and sewer bills. So we are lending our support to this bill as it moves through the process. Again, I think the most significant challenge for this bill is going to be the Ways and Means process and whether or not there are funding resources available and it becomes a priority for a limited funding resource. Unless there's any questions on those items, I'll go to next slide. Okay, House Bill 2169.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I was going to say that is not, it was 2168, so. There we go.
It's 2168.
Your driver is distracted.
Yeah, that was, it was like a back and forth. I know the numbers get confused in my head as well, but yeah, that didn't seem right. House Bill 2168 is the septic loan funding bill. So this program was established back in 2015 to provide funding for the repair replacement of septic systems or connection to a public sewer system for low-income individuals. It's been a successful program throughout the state of making sure that we're addressing water quality and public health challenges associated with failing septic systems. Really important as well for homeowners who are really struggling with that challenge and the cost that's associated with it. The bill received a public hearing on January 22, so very early in the session. It already received a work session in the House Ag Land Use Natural Resource and Water Committee. So it is currently in the joint Ways and Means Committee. This, this funding has been continuous. So without additional state funding, the bill, the program would run out of funds, I believe, in the coming year ahead. So this one is a pretty high priority for us to continue to have that program moving forward to benefit Oregonians in the state.
Question? Can I ask a question on that? So is this, is this for households in urban unincorporated and elsewhere and not in cities? Because it seems to me like the city of Hillsborough way back when had a program to help make this transition. So, but that's not the case. This is a household anywhere?
This would apply to both. Yeah, thank you for that question, Director Willie. This would apply to households in cities and outside as well. So again, that's why when the bill initially passed back in 2015, there was a lot of effort to make sure that the funds could be used for connecting to a public sewer. So where we would see that is probably, you know, of course, and more within the city boundaries. So yeah, it would apply for both. And we've seen a number of jurisdictions that have used either their own utility dollars, other grants available through federal or state to partner up with these, with this state funding program as well. So we've seen a lot of jurisdictions carry out the program. I know Plaquemines County, I know that we've had interaction with this program to kind of implement and get those dollars out on the ground locally.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, I have a quick question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
This came up in a discussion I had with Elizabeth. And in part two of that question I asked Elizabeth is like, does clean water, do you have sort of an inventory of number of households that actually use septic? And I think majority probably are in the rural rather than the cities and the urban unincorporated.
I'm not so sure about that.
Go ahead.
Yes, Clean Water Services keeps an active inventory. I think it was just under 2,000 properties, at least in unincorporated. It tends to be areas where a sewer just hasn't been expanded. And it's tough when one septic tank fails and to provide that extension to connections. Sometimes it is better to, to help them fix it. So it's sort of a program that we work with the cities on and within Clean Water Services. It's a question that I think a former director would always ask every year at the public, at our budget hearing.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So other noteworthy legislation I wanted to mention, we continue to work on the Governor's Middle Housing Bill. That's House Bill 2138. We have been working with the Governor's Office as well as with Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to make sure that there are no conflicts with the provisions of the bill and water quality permitting standards and requirements. And as it stands right now in the most recent amendment language, we do still see that there are some areas where there's lack of clarity that could cause confusion, especially for developers that may believe that certain water quality standards, especially around stormwater, may not be required under the state law because of this bill, but would certainly still be required because we have to implement our water quality permit under our MS4 for stormwater. So we're working through that with the Governor's Office and with DEQ to try and make sure that we've got the right language there. House Bill 3246 is an interesting bill around industrial symbiosis. So really, it's a bill looking to better promote resource recovery for things like energy, water, materials, waste byproducts, and put those to another use ultimately. And so this definitely matches up with a lot of the work that we're doing at Clean Water Services around resource recovery of things like nutrients, energy, water reuse. We've been working with Representative Helm on this bill. He is one of the sponsors of this legislation. And he is working with a group called the Center for Sustainable Infrastructure. There will be some amendments coming for this bill that will provide funding for up to six pilot projects to try and help Business Oregon work through how you go about promoting this type of effort and this type of work. There will also be some language included in there that would provide clarity to ensure that utilities like Clean Water Services are able to pencil these types of projects out. So making sure that we can recover revenue for these types of commodities and resources in order to make sure that we would be able to pencil these types of projects out. So that bill will be heard again on March 12. So we will be working to provide our support through that discussion.
When you're saying pencil them out, I assume you're meaning make them financially viable? I just haven't quite heard it said that way before. Is that what you're meaning?
That is exactly what I mean, is making sure that, yes, if we've got a commodity that we're able to, to participate in garnering revenues through, you know, that commodity's reuse in order to make sure, again, that we can pencil this type of work out and these types of projects out.
Things like the water reuse, making sure our fees are adequate to cover its expense or accepting fats, oils, and grease to create energy, making sure it makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, then Senate Bill 91 is a bill that is moving through the process that we had talked about, I know, at the board learning. And this would ban the use of firefighting foam that contains PFAS. That ban would take effect in July of 2026. The bill had a public hearing on February 19. The bill was amended to take out some of the disposal provisions in the legislation, which we were not super excited to see. The challenge, I think, with the bill was the fiscal impact. So we are having conversations with Senator Solman's office and well, as well as the Oregon Environmental Council to make sure that there is a plan around how you dispose of legacy foam that may not be used by that date of July of 2026.
Where is TVFNR on this?
I don't, they hadn't, they did not provide testimony, but the association representing fire districts did provide testimony and they're in support. And a lot of fire districts have already converted over to the other non-PFAS-containing foam.
So it's stopping the production as well, production use and addressing disposal?
It's, now it's really, I think, stopping, stopping the bleeding. So the way the bill is set up now, it would not allow you to utilize that foam as of July of 2026. So again, the question that becomes unanswered, and that is if there's foam that's not used, is there a good means or infrastructure available to responsibly dispose of that legacy foam?
Thank you.
Well, it seemed to me that larger, larger organizations could probably afford to meet that or maybe have already done the transition, but it's going to be your smaller, maybe more rural fire districts that are not going to be able to do that. So is there any consideration of some financial support for those rural?
This is mostly about air, this is mostly about airport firefighting and certain hazmat stuff, isn't it? And it's not a general, like this is not in use, I don't think, in general firefighting, is it?
Well, the article that I saw was, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm sorry, sorry, I interrupted. The, so we've been working closely with the Special Districts Association of Oregon on this. And so they, they're wearing the two hats. They're wearing the water quality hat of the information we're bringing to them. And they're also representing a lot of those rural fire districts. So they've done outreach to the rural fire districts and have not identified any issues. The bill and the amendment language did push that date out from January 2026 to July of 2026. That was at the request of some of the fire districts. So I think that they believe that that would be a more reasonable timeline for them to fully convert over. But again, a lot of them have already made that, that transition over if they do use any of that. It's called AFF firefighting foam. So right now, the fire, fire districts and organizations that represent them on a statewide basis are supportive of the bill.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I will just mention very briefly that there will be another pretty significant conversation on PFAS that will be happening soon. House Bill 3512, I had mentioned again during the board learning. I expect that that bill should be heard in the next couple of weeks, and that is a broader phase out of PFAS from a variety of products. So things ranging from textiles, it has the AFF firefighting foam in there. Skewax is always the one I can't forget that's listed on there. But it expands greatly prior efforts and legislation that's passed around very specific product categories like personal care products. So it's pretty significant. I imagine that we'll be hearing about it in the news as that bill makes its way through the process.
Normally, we have a next step slide, but somehow I deleted it. But realistically, just wanted to give you a heads up, we'll be back in three weeks. But today is a very exciting day for the GR team. It is the deadline for measure dropping bills. So by the end of today, we'll know the vast majority of the insane 4,000 bills that actually made it through the process and got introduced. So today is the last day to introduce bills. There's always exceptions. And then from there, we work through March to the next big deadline. The GR team is working with the staff assistants to locate a date for the county day in the Capitol. We had to move off of the date we had originally proposed because of the SHS work group interfering with everybody's ability to be down there, as well as some other conflicts that were making the whole day not going to be able to function for us. So we're looking at some time, hopefully in April, for that conversation so that we'll have time to talk about our budget requests and have more information ready for your board at that time. But we'll be back in three weeks. We appreciate your time and attention, and I see, I was trying.
You're trying to get out of here.
Yep, so we have more than our allotted.
Are there further questions for Ms. Doyle, Commissioner Willie?
I have a whole team, the whole team.
Is this Vice Chair Five that's talking right now? Carly, that was the two, I'm sorry.
Carly apologized.
Carly has, yeah, that's not fair.
Commissioner, Commissioner Willie, you need to behave.
I'm not there in person to frown, but.
Pablo, as you know, a part of me is in the timber industry, so I have two bills that I'd like to talk to you about, not at this moment, but certainly soon. That is House Bill 3103, that's in the AG Committee. That's the one that Hampton Lumber has been pushing for last year and this year. And the other one is Senator Weber, Senate Bill 455. That's in Senator Solman's committee. That's the HCP Study Impact. So if I could, when you get a few minutes, if you could reach out, let's talk about this.
Sounds great. Yeah, I'd love to chat with you about that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I guess you'll, you and the team will continue to tell us when we need to have strategic conversations, if and when.
Absolutely, and we appreciate the partnership you've already done as a commission with us, and we will keep that up. Great momentum.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, Erin, and thank you, everyone else as well, Carly, Pablo, Tracy. You've, one more time, educated all of us. Thank you. So at this point, we are going to go to board leadership and communication. But before we do that, because this way I won't forget, let's do a review of the formal agenda and any issues with the formal agenda. I don't want to forget. Have you had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Angie?
Hi, thank you. So this isn't, excuse me, this isn't directly related to the agenda, but potentially a public comment. And I just want to let you know in your inboxes, you received an email from Marnie Kyle yesterday. Sorry, the days actually are blending together for me, so I apologize if I haven't, okay. It was yesterday, elections was yesterday. Marnie will also be working with Angie Aguilar to have that information posted within the packet. So those emails are publicly, or the attachments are publicly available. What the attachments are, question and answer in response to testimony that your board has received over the last several weeks, months regarding elections. They are dated based on the date of the board meeting or work session for ease of access. I would strongly encourage your board to take up the offer of staff to have one-on-one conversations with Marnie and the team, especially as there's been significant testimony. So staff are here to be of service and to answer any questions that your board may have after that information has been reviewed by you.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. I'm sure as others have read that memo, and it's very helpful. It's very helpful, and it has helped me form some thoughts. and it has helped me form some thoughts. So thank you, appreciate it. And I appreciate the staff, and I'm sure we all do here, appreciate the staff and the work that they've done to answer the question.
It was very robust. I, I really appreciated the question, answer, question, answer format, and it was clear to me that the teams put a lot of effort into being thorough, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And so I just, just to publicly call out, Marnie Kyle, Jason Bush, Dan Forrester, and Joan Nelson were the primary, well Courtney, Courtney's involved in everything. But really.
Worked as your leader.
And I'll just leave it at that, it's a great.
Great. Thank you, thank you for that. So we're good with the formal agenda for this evening, all right? And moving on to board and leadership communication, we're, you know, Vice Chair prerogative here, we're going to mix it up a little bit, and I'm going to ask Courtney to go first.
Oh, what a, what a treat.
What a special day, special day.
Still convincing there.
Get the red plate to eat on tonight.
Good, there's no, you know, this way, Ms. Angie can steal my, you know, can't steal my thunder.
I know, or I get feedback.
Although I think today, probably it's possible we have different thoughts today. So thank you, Vice Chair Treese, Acting Chair Treese. I wanted to raise a couple, we're going to give you a little bit deeper update on this in our communication with you later this week, but I always like to highlight our wins here up in the Office of County Counsel on behalf of the county. So as your board may be aware, one of the functions that the Sheriff's Office performs on behalf of the county and community is receiving and processing concealed handgun licenses. It's not, you know, it's, it's a pretty routine process, but about three years ago, the Sheriff's Office denied concealed handgun license on the basis that the petitioner, the applicant didn't meet the criteria specifically that they had been convicted of a felony in another state. However, the applicant challenged that denial in state court, saying that their felony had been reduced to a misdemeanor by a California process. So the state court agreed with that, but we went ahead and appealed that decision to say, no, that the process by which their record had been reduced to a misdemeanor in California wasn't the equivalent of expungent, here, expungement of their sentence here in Oregon. And after three years of litigation, we finally prevailed on that issue. Again, I can see Ms. Commissioner Willie smirking because he's impressed with how fast the law works, but it is, it is a really important case for the state and clarifies some of the case law around concealed handgun license. So credit to Kim Stewart, who defended the county in this case.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah.
Well, thank, and especially to Kim for her work on that.
I also want to just mention that next week, our office in partnership with risk management, and again, the Sheriff's Office, are going to be involved in a mock trial concerning a trial we have coming up in May. So a mock trial is just exactly what it sounds like. It is a, an abbreviated and simulated court case where Mr. Bush, which I have to give a lot of credit to Jason for taking this on in addition to his other duties, will be standing in the case of plaintiff and making, trying to make the plaintiff's case, and our litigator, John Mansfield, will be doing the defense of the case. We will have mock jurors who will actually hear the presentation of the facts and the evidence and the testimony, and then we get to see their deliberations. So this is really valuable to the county as we move towards our trial in May. It's a significant lift to do this kind of thing, so, but it's really, really valuable. So I want to thank the Sheriff's Office for their time, Risk Management for their time, and my, the staff upstairs who are putting a lot of effort into this because it will pay off. So just want to acknowledge the hard work that's being done.
Is that all being done internally, or is there a jury consultant involved?
Yes, there's a consultant who finds the jurors and also listens and gives us feedback. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Angie?
I was wondering where the dial was going to spin. This is exciting. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Treese and Commissioners. Another email that's in your inbox is on AMR activity that did come in this afternoon to your inbox, and that includes an update on potential union activity as well as possible rate increases which fall in alignment with their agreement. So please take a look at that email. We do plan to launch our internal new constituent response tool. Mr. Bransford mentioned this to, in an email to your board last week, the administrative office is launching a new constituent management system tomorrow. The new system is called Indiegov, which is intended to provide several process improvements, including shorter response times to constituents, consistent one Washington County message, messaging, automated workflows, and data analytics that we've never been able to measure before. Your board will not need to take any action related to the launch, this doesn't change your work. Staff assistants to the board will each be receiving training and support as we move forward. This Friday's constituent report will have the combination of the current version of the report and the new version, so please be on the lookout for that. I will also mention that I emailed your board just an update of the all employee meeting, which I held yesterday. There was good attendance. In the email, I referenced new slides to take a look at, and one of the things that I just continue to be pulled through is just our amazing employees and how even through these tying, trying times, they are so committed to service delivery. The thoughtful questions, just demeanor in the room is, was frankly inspiring. Some things I do want to point out because it connects not to Washington County, but other jurisdictions, unnamed jurisdictions, is some of the progress we've made within our financial stability, financial transformation work. Over the last four years, we have worked really hard to separate out one-time expenditures and ongoing expenditures. And what do I specifically mean by that? We have had significant federal funds come in through PERS and ARPA. We have not, in essence, commingled those funds with our general fund. So why, why is that important? Absolutely, we have, and we will continue to face what feels like a cliff in service delivery with the expiration of those funds. However, those funds are not masked within our general operating budget. Your board has done work to reduce the reliance on one-time SIP dollars for ongoing operating budget. Has then been hard, yes, but is it financially prudent so that we have a brighter future? Yes. So I just want to commend your board for those actions, and as hard as this point in time is, it would be much harder if we didn't take the actions that we've taken up to this point. So just thank you for your leadership. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, and I think we see evidence of other places, not necessarily following the strict guidelines that we have. So I, I commend our staff for doing that.
Some small county to the.
Some little county. So with that.
We just have to stay true to our financial practices, that's all I encourage.
And to our commitments from the board as well. I remember those cares days when it was fast and furious, so it's definitely been.
Been a dinner without Courtney.
No, exactly, exactly. And our financial team that did put those fences up, and thank you for that. Diane?
Thank you, Vice Chair and Director Treese, and good afternoon, Board of Clean Water Services. We're really glad the sun is now out and the rain has parted. Our operations team at Field Operations, the treatment facilities and pump station, pump stations were really busy over the weekend and, and yesterday. There were a lot of power bumps, so that when a power bump happens, it really stutters the treatment plant, so they have to then restart. We did have one sanitary sewer overflow at the Hillsborough Treatment Plant. There was a bypass pump that a contractor was operating, and the power bump took it out. The team rapidly scrambled to get it going again with the contractor and, and the cleanup. The pump stations, our emergency generators all worked, so we were able to maintain that. The team was fueling the, the stations and making sure they could restart any electrical gear. But it was a pretty bumpy day with all the, the wind and, and et cetera that came. Field Ops had about 20 customer calls, not quite 20. So a lot of folks worried about the rising water levels in the creeks, and they did clear out some street culverts and, and other storm grades where they could to help folks. Let's see what else happened. The treatment plant people were really, they were, you know, the shift, the 24-hour shift was really busy, so wanted the board to know how much they were working, and, you know, we're very, thank.
Thank you.
For their work.
Was the scope of the overflow relatively minimal?
It was pretty small. It was over a period, I think, maybe 20 minutes or half an hour, yeah. So they were able to get it cleaned up.
Okay, I mean, this is just in comparison to overflows people might hear about in other jurisdictions, this, this would not be the same.
No.
Or similar.
No.
Same, small jurisdiction.
Same one, I think it was.
But, yeah, busy, the team's really busy, busy with budget and tightening our belts, so they're, they're doing a good job.
Thank you. Diane, I did have a question that I sent over to Clean Water Services. I was in conversation with my, in my regular monthly update with under Deputy Sheriff Alroque, and we were talking about the flooding of the East, East Precinct Building Parking Lot, the one on Murray. And I think that there's several people that are looking into that.
Trying to see what happened. It looks like they're just, they're in a kind of a flooding area, so we'll see how creative it can get.
Yeah.
I don't think they saw any plugs in the line, so it was really literally water just sort of backing up, yeah.
I just appreciate the, we'll, we'll settle this, or we'll continue the conversation, but I really appreciate the responsiveness. All right, word communication. Would our Zoom member like to go first, Commissioner Fi? I'm looking at it as a, as an honor, not a duty.
Vice Chair Treese, it's your prerogative. Yes, I can certainly go next. Thank you for tapping me. And I will start since Tanya went. Tanya, and this might be in the best, or in the interest for the board as well, but for me, I like to better understand the priority for housing related for mental health commitments, including aid and assist and civil commitments. I learned recently that Oregon Health Authority has changed its priority list with aid and assist now being the top priority. So I'd like to understand what is Washington County's strategy in response to this shift, and how can the board get better visibility into the impacts and next steps? So that's a request for me, if it's a sort of a briefing, but I really do think it could be a, a good conversation at the board level at a work session and whatnot. You don't need to respond right now, Tanya, but something for you to noodle on.
Thank you, Commissioner Fi, thank you for that question, and staff will follow up with your board at a later point.
Yeah, and board, if you are interested in such topic, please let Tanya know, and you can either do a board discussion or individual. In terms of my, my update at a board, things that overlap with the board or, or board awarenesses, the only thing that I will report back today is J-PAC. I think we've had a really robust board level discussion, so I won't belabor that topic. But just to sort of give you that real-life experience, as if you were there, the discussion really went well, just like we expected at our board. Everybody was sort of, I really, and this, maybe I'm biased, but really, everybody was thinking the same way our board was sort of articulating when the staff presented the RFA, the regional, the regional flexible funds allocation topic. And the, the comment that when staff presented that, the comment that we had, or the discussion we had, sort of everyone at the J-PAC had the same. So everybody was in alignment around to focus on be regional and to stay true to the importance of regionalism, and, and I carried on the agreement from the board, the board's position on what scenario the board chose. So it went well. In a nutshell, the conversation went well, everybody was thinking the same way we were thinking, so go Washington County.
Thank you. Is there, I can't tell if you're finished, Commissioner Fi.
Sorry, yeah, I muted myself, and then there was a line of children here. I muted myself, but yeah, I'm done, sorry, I should have said, and that's all my updates.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, who would like to go next?
Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, me too. I attended a West Side Economic Alliance board meeting last week, and one specific thing I'll call out that came up there that I think is important to know is that the WEA is very concerned, to the point where they're planning to lead on, or try to lead the convening of efforts and work around available industrial lands and the whole broader discussion about being ready for the next big opportunity as a region. So I thought that was worthy of just making sure that.
Awareness.
Yeah, that, that everybody's got an awareness that that's where they're coming from. There was a robust discussion about that as well. I attended County College on Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
What did you learn?
Oh, wow, so much stuff.
I was curious. I'm just, I just wonder what.
Oh, so this one was mostly about, it was about assessment and taxation, county government finance, basically, land use, risk management and insurance stuff, those kinds of, it was kind of like the general government.
That's interesting.
Set of sessions. But I did learn, I learned quite a bit of stuff and things that were unique about Washington County and like one other county. So there's, and we've got some special rules and the right to farm. I didn't know, I didn't know there was a right to farm that was, you know about that?
No.
You need to go to County College.
I do.
That actually impacts a lot of, like, a lot of things, not a little, not a small number.
Thank you.
Yesterday, we had the, Commissioner Fi and I both attended the Public Safety Levy Steering Committee, and things are progressing there. I want to thank the crew for allowing me to ask a lot of questions and say a lot of things I've probably been waiting to say. So I felt a little bit like I talked too much, and I told them that, but I think we're at a good spot, so Erin and team, thank you for allowing that. I don't think there's anything super important coming out of, I mean, we're, we're just moving to work forward, and I think we're making decisions, providing direction that is helpful to the team, and are narrowing towards being ready for the referral. But there's also, I think, an acknowledgement about the timing. So we've got a lot of work to do, and the budget kind of coincides with that, and I'm sure the library levy is.
We're on the same, same.
Same spot, so.
On the same parade.
I did, I think I mentioned this, but I had a, a long conversation with Representative, also House Majority Leader Bowman on Sunday, and that included a lot of topics. I was not really authorized specifically by Erin, but kind of semi-authorized, and I took my opportunity there. Briefing on.
Getting your direction from Erin now, is that what the deal is?
Supposed to be.
On that to, on, on, on those efforts, yes. I had a briefing on the CPO modernization today, meeting this Thursday with some community members concerned about climate action, and maybe our lack of action from their perspective. Friday, I'm meeting with Molly Hogan from Welcome Home Coalition, and then on Friday, I think we have a legis, PSCC Legislative Topics Meeting. Saturday, I'm going to OMSI to attend, I was invited to attend the Mesa Day, Mesa Demo Day, which I think is kids innovating.
Oh, cool.
So I'll be there. That was recommended by some staff at one point, so that's what I got.
Cool, thank you. Mr. Willie?
Yeah, well, last week I attended the Portland Metro Chamber Reform. Yeah, um, well, last week I attended the Portland Metro Chamber Forum Breakfast, which is the State of the Economy Report for, of course, City of Portland. Uh, Eco Northwest had presented, uh, had done their survey and their homework on that. A lot of information. I think I forwarded that slide deck to everybody. So if you didn't get it, let me know. It's got a lot of really depressing information.
Doomsday loop, perhaps?
The doomsday loop is, would be a new term that we learned. But yeah, just, uh, it was a lot of information, um, of, of stuff that, uh, we got to take care of or they have to take care of. And certainly, you know, so goes Portland, so goes the region. And so we need to be cautious of that. Next week, uh, just tying on that, uh, I'm going to be attending the Elected's Briefing hosted by the Portland Chamber, Metro, Motlum County, uh, Chair Vega Peterson, um, to get the opportunity to directly have that conversation. Should be relatively interesting.
Would you remind me what, what meeting is it?
Oh, listen, let me tell you where that is, because it is next week. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay, I'm just curious.
You're not taking up my five minutes.
Go, go, go.
So, uh, I also had, uh, last Friday was the Forest Trust Lands, um, FTLAC meeting. Very interesting stuff. So I'm getting back into timber now. Uh, and so, uh, the, the FTLAC meeting, we talked about the hiring of the new state forester. Remember a while back, our state forester resigned? Usually that's the Board of Forestry's job, uh, but they've hit the pause button now because the governor has legislation that would make it so that she would appoint, uh, the state forester. Not sure that's a good idea or not, but, um, I will have to wait and see. But then most of the conversation was, of course, on the Habitat Conservation Plan, Implementation Plans, Forest Management Plans, all those things are going to be directed by Habitat Conservation Plan, including new, um, species that are going to be included in the endangered species list. And that, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. But so interesting stuff. I do enjoy that. It's just, um, very time consuming. Saturday, Friday night, Pam and my wife and I went to the Library Foundation of Washington County Annual Auction. That was an interesting evening. Saturday night, I went to the Hillsborough Schools Foundation Annual Gala, and they raised a lot of money. That's always a very fun event. Yesterday, I was at Metro, of course, with the SHS, uh, from four to six, where we had, as you saw in, um, if you want to get a good snapshot on it, OPB has an article out on the conversation, uh, whereas Metro President Peterson, as well as, um, Clackamas County Commissioner West, uh, were made, both made some pretty strong comments about, um, Chair Vega Peterson's, uh, latest, um, letter and certainly media on the $104 million shortfall that they have discovered. So, um, uh, so yeah, uh, that was an interesting conversation. We also talked about next steps in the SHS Initiative Proposal that they, uh, we are considering or they are considering and, uh, lots of information there. Tomorrow, we have the Library Levy Steering Committee, uh, coming back together again. I have a meeting with, uh, this State Forester, Mike Capretta, to talk about Stammenberry Trail. Lunch with the Portland Mayor on, uh, tomorrow as well. Should be an interesting conversation considering yesterday. So yeah, the hits just keep coming.
It's a head parade.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. And you had quite a bit of time, by the way. Just saying. So.
What is so funny over there? That was a serious report.
Thank you for your continued work on the forestry issues. I think I'm really pleased that we have, you're looking at all of those things. So, thank you. So last week was, it was a really busy week. I did have the opportunity to go to visit the Oregon Department of Human Services, Washington County location. It's in Beaverton. Rolanda Garcia and I have worked on a number of different, uh, committees and boards together. And she took me through, uh, their process for child welfare services and for, uh, sustainability services, Canif, SNAP, those types of things. And it was, it was really powerful to listen to her talk about the services that they provide, how they are working so hard to reduce the number of children that go into foster care by being on the preventative side first and working with, uh, the family unit to keep the children in the family when they're not at, obviously at risk, but working with the family to develop the skill sets. And it, it was really interesting to listen to the staff, listen to Rolanda and see the sense of pride that they have in the work that they're doing. And the, they talked about one, uh, one group called, um, Iron Tribe. And this is a group of people that have come together to support houses where families can go and live together that where there's opportunity for counseling services, but they are still functioning as a family unit there. And this Iron Tribe is kind of interesting. You might want to look them up. Some of them, some of them have criminal histories, some of them were in biker gangs. And what they, this is a group that comes together to give back to their community. And their goal is to put these houses out and into our community, which is pretty cool to see. That's just one aspect of what, what I learned. Uh, I was at the Hillsborough State of the City on Thursday evening. I thought that, uh, Hillsborough did a great job. Mayor, uh, Beach Pace did a great job again at the Library Foundation, the annual gala there. And I managed to stand up and sneak the mic for a few minutes and talk about our, uh, library levy that was upcoming. I figured it was a, uh, a room full of, uh, compassionate, library-leaning people that could help with our campaign and that. So a good opportunity. On Saturday, I was at the Muslim Educational Trust Gala, their annual fundraiser. And then on Sunday, I went to the Joint Town Hall that was moderated by Mayor Beatty. It was at the Beaverton Library. Senator Kate Lieber, Rep. Helm and Rep. Graber were all there. And it was really interesting to, to listen to the questions that came from the audience as well as what the responses were. So they're, they're working hard and they are, they get a lot of questions, as we do, about federal issues, but they try to put it in the context of the work that they do. And it was, it was really good. Tomorrow, again, Library Levy Steering Committee. I'm also, uh, attending an ARWAC meeting this week, so I'll have a check-in tomorrow. I'll be in Salem, um, all tomorrow evening to testify, as you heard earlier, on Senate Bill 610. And, uh, because I'll be in Salem, thank you Stephen Roberts for sitting in for me at MPAC along with Jessica. I appreciate your support there. Commissioner Phi is also, she is my alternate, but she is, uh, not available tomorrow night either. So thank you for doing that. Thursday, all day is the, well, not all day, but a lot of the day, is the CDBG Grant Application Presentations in the morning and into the early afternoon. I'm sitting through this application process, even though Chair Harrington is, is going to be the PAB representative. It just made sense for me to follow this through and get through this process and then the chair will take over. And Friday evening, I'm going to be at the Central Cultural Gala. So I'm looking forward to that. Is there anything else for the, go to the order before we adjourn?
Vice Chair Therese?
Yes.
The, the, um, you made the comment that I wasn't, uh, available, but it's on my calendar.
Oh.
So.
Well, let's talk to Steve. I, I didn't, I, we had talked earlier about it.
We, meaning who?
Uh, we talked about it here in the work session room, you and me, but there was a conflict. Maybe that conflict has gone away. But anyway, we'll, we'll, if you can go, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, I don't know who, it's on my calendar, so I plan.
Perfect.
Now that I know for sure.
Well, then let's have, let's make sure that Jessica and Stephen give you a, um, update. It's, is it in person tomorrow night? Online, so that's, that's great. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Phi. It's great that you could be there. Appreciate it. Hey, is there anything else? All right. We'll see you back in the boardroom at, uh, before 6:30, Commissioner Willie?
6:25 for him and 6:30 for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you. I've enjoyed being the, uh, the sit-in here, so, thank you.
Is it adjourned now? Should we, should I lock?
Yes, yes, yes. If you said, Commissioner Phi, sorry.
I want to see if he's screwing around. I'm going to.